I don't know if you're going to get the talks or two, but I love all of them. So it'll be okay.
And you got that, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Anyway. All of the announced people. It's all headed to the end. It's such a dream. I was like, what? You have to cover it with this. I don't want to. And I work for this. I mean, there's certain things that I heard. But you may hear. Yeah, it was something. There's our game. You can. That's like a. You were. And I like. Yeah. And I have a few. And I just play. See, any problem with the other. Yeah. I don't think it's worth it. I think. I don't think. Wish we could. I don't get it. So I think the office. I'm not really nervous about. I don't have a lot of time. They don't have to get. Twenty-four. You have a great job. Hopefully, it's like. Thank you. Yes. I remember. You could always say. You could. Especially if you want to like. Never. Everything. Okay. See, I always want to see you. You just say. So I. You can add your lead today. Sometimes I can do anything from here. I'm not being a second person. I think it was the second one. I spent a first three more. So maybe here. Move to the. Here, Mr. Brown. There's a. And I. Where you wish to. But then. That's. For me. This is. I'm. We got. Now, three. Those. So. Make sure. Thank you, sir. Yeah.
Good God. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, five on one Main Street, five thirty P M. I'd like us to stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May have a roll call. Crenshaw.
Here.
Walker. Mullen. Cackley. Here. Dade. Andrews.
Here.
Tillman. Bryant. Greenwald.
Here.
Nine present. Item number four, mayor's correspondence. Saturday, May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, the Farvers Market at the River City Mall parking lot starts from eight to eleven A M. Hamilton High School graduation ceremony is at two P M. And the mule show at the Kiakuck Saddle Club from nine A M. to five o'clock P M. Sunday, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, there's a speed show at the Kiakuck Saddle. Um, club with, uh, and it starts at eleven A M. And then Kiakuck, Warsaw and Central League Community School Districts all have their graduation ceremonies at two o'clock P M. Monday, May nineteenth, the school board meeting is at, um, six o'clock P M. And the Kiakuck Hamilton Dam Museum is holding a spaghetti supper fundraiser at the Kiakuck Yacht Club from four to seven P M. Then Friday, May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, is the Back Alley Band Fest, six o'clock P M. To nine o'clock P M. And that's followed by hours. After-hours bands from nine, nine o'clock on. And then May twenty-sixth, Monday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five, is a Veterans Day Memorial Day Service at eleven A M. At the Kiakuck National Cemetery in the older side at Seventeenth and Ridge. And as always, eat, drink and shop local and kindness matters. Item number five is citizens' request. And if we have someone that would like to come forward, please keep your comments to around three minutes. And if you have any questions, ask them then. If you are, please come, state your name and your, um, address, please. We have, we can glue it back.
Hopefully, it's a different piece this time. Good afternoon. My name is Jim Rowner. Uh, I moved out and now live at two twelve Washington Street, apartment one twenty-nine. And I have a question. I, I already discussed this with the priest chief. Uh, I'd like to get the city's input. Understand that bicycles are supposed to travel with the flow of traffic when they travel the streets. Pedestrians, when there is no established sidewalk, are supposed to walk facing traffic. I'm neither. Which side of the street do I ride on? He's before he had to. He, he said he's gonna look him up.
He's gonna do that.
I wanted to get.
We're gonna give that to him.
I want to present that to the city so we can have some sort of agreement.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's a good question. I didn't have the, the answer to off the top of my head. Never been asked that before. But, um, it looks like Iowa code, um, has a, a specific code regarding, uh, wheelchairs. And, uh, the only thing that it mentions in here is, uh, that if you are going to overtake, uh, a pedestrian or pass a pedestrian, that you provide an audible, uh, horn, which, uh, looks like it treats you as a pedestrian, and you should follow those, uh, that rule set, which would mean you would be on the opposite side of the road. If you cannot be on a sidewalk.
Answers that question. Thank you. One, couple of questions real quick. So some here. The intersection of Eighteenth and Main, where they just, just built toward the sidewalk. Why did that not make it ADA compliant crossing Main Street in front of Coca-Cola Credit to where the Chinese restaurant used to be? Is ADA compliant crossing Eighteenth from Coca-Cola Credit to Eklon Motors? Is ADA compliant from Eklon Motors crossing Main Street or Coca-Cola Credit to where the Chinese restaurant used to be? It's not.
Okay.
I'd have to look because I'm doing by memory now, but I believe on the side where the Chinese restaurant is, is currently not ADA compliant.
Well, they could have made the Eighteenth, the one in front of Coca-Cola Credit, Eighteenth, ADA compliant in anticipation of, and the one.
We can't do.
And the one with the Chinese restaurant.
Legally, by the state of Iowa, if we, if we. Make a ramp ADA compliant and, uh, like say flow your wheelchair out into Main Street, there has to be somewhere to pick you up on the other side.
But the, uh, the side where the Chinese restaurant used to be is ADA compliant crossing to.
I'd have to go look. I, I don't know that.
I roll it every day.
I'd have to go look.
I roll it every day, sir.
And I believe one of the other reasons is because of where the handles are at on that side for the traffic signals.
And. There, there's been a lot of comments, complaints about the inner, the stoplight in front of, uh, Farm and Home. About it not operating. Primarily people wanting to turn left on Main Street coming out of Farm and Home. Is there plans in place to get that operational again?
We're waiting on parts.
Okay.
It's, the, the lights are older and it takes a while to get them.
That and I cheat and I use that to cross Main Street.
We're waiting on parts because I've answered a couple of those questions. Right, Brian? I'm not wrong, right?
I like using that across Main Street. Like, I can, this has enough mass. I trip the street lights. But yeah, the, the side of the street thing was my biggest.
Okay.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Chief, what code is that? Just curious.
Uh, two thirty-five A.
I'm just curious if there's any, uh, progress being made on this idea of a homeless. Shelter or homeless alliance, homeless, what's, what's the Kiakucks concerned about their homeless population?
Now, one council member said he doesn't want to see him sleeping on the sidewalk. And I object to that. I think it's, uh, important that people are safe. And that sometimes it's necessary when a lady is talking to herself and she's sitting in a public place, I presume that she is there because she's safer there than out in the middle. Wherever, you know, she would have an alternative.
Okay.
I, I present myself everywhere as a homeless person, even before I. I didn't lose my home yet, but before I was removed from my home by the city of Kiakuck for unsafe to occupy and pu- pushed into the streets. I was taking upon myself the, with empathy, the role of a homeless person because I don't like people being bullied. And this town has gotten very aggressive in their attitudes of. Parking to get their way and revving their engines to get their way. And there's a lot of bullying goes on here and I don't like it. So my message this week is that I've been sa- saying for several days now, just say no to bullies. It's your right and your responsibility to stand up and make a choice of your own, not.
Okay.
Push people into. So I'm, I'm just saying, what, what's the city's update on homeless situation?
Sure. So that is a private groups project and we'll have to check with them to see where they're at. Do you, have you had any updates from them recently?
Just what I've read in the paper, um, that they're hoping to be, um, in the building by winter.
Well, I guess, I guess my concern is I saw the numbers, a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars to bring a sixty-five thousand dollar building up to. What it would take to inhabit eight people per shower or something like that. I read the article. To me, that's irrational and that nobody should be putting their money into that kind of adventure, especially on block party Eighth and Main. It's not a good target for the homeless population in our retail heart and soul of downtown. Um, that's just my opinion. Uh, I saw in Iowa City, I saw homeless shelter trying to go near a trailer park. And they were worried about the overflow of traffic coming into their trailer park and there was a big resistance to that. So.
I understa- we, you know, we understand that. And when they went through the city planning and the board of adjustment, there were people that had their views and there were people that had one side and one side and the other. But this building is the one they've chosen and it is in the right area. It is zoned right. So. These people are working diligently to get it open and we have to be, um, thankful that somebody's doing something for them. And we just, um, Pam is keeping a close eye on it and so is the fire department. And they will have the, it up to code and safe for anybody that wants to go there.
So why, why is there no warming center if that progress is going forward?
We, we, this, there has been a couple of warming centers throughout the last winter and the cool, there'll be a cooling center maybe this summer. But you have to understand that there's a couple of churches that have had warming centers and the people destroyed part of the inside of the church and so they didn't want to do it again. So. You know, that's hard to, that's hard to swallow, but that's how, how it works.
Who, who's leading that responsibility to?
If the, if a church wants to open a warming center, they can open a warming center.
Is there somebody that initiated that?
Not that I know of, not that I know of. The city of Kiakuck has a warming center and a cooling center at certain degrees from seven in the morning till four thirty, I mean, from eight in the morning till four thirty in the afternoon while we're open. And that, that happens here.
Right. So every night in the wintertime this year.
Not every night.
Last year, there was a warming center at St. John's. This year, there was nothing.
That's because they had a lot of vandalism and it was.
So that was a private decision of that.
That has nothing to do with the city.
Right. That was a private decision of, of that.
That was the St. John's Church doing it themselves.
And so you, the city doesn't have any affiliation with anybody that's tr- trying to maintain a warming center in preparation for this homeless.
Not that I know right now.
And the, is it the homeless alliance, the ones that are doing the home, home, homeless?
They're working very hard just trying to get that building open. So.
Is there anybody else involved with them or?
I have no idea. That's a private organization.
So what is the city's concern about homelessness? And what contribution are you?
I would.
The city gonna provide?
I would say to you, Mr. Dodge, that if we need to have a conversation about what the city's ideas for the homeless, we probably need to have it other than right now because.
My three minutes is up. I'm gonna close with this.
You're more than welcome to come back and, and talk to us about that.
Right. I'm gonna close with this. If there's a commitment to this population, it should be in dollars and cents and there should be plenty of adequate funding available with all the grants and stuff that's going on to target that group and make something happen.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay. Item number six, the consent agenda. Minutes of the special council meeting and council workshop of April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-eight. Minutes of the regular city council meeting of May first, two thousand twenty-five. Cash receipts and treasures report, uh, for April twenty-twenty-five. Resolution approving a liquor license for Santana's Mexican Restaurant, thirty-seven fifty-three Main Street, Class C Retail Alcohol License effective June eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Resolution approving a liquor license for the Kiakuck Yacht Club Incorporated, twenty-twenty-nine Mississippi River Road, Class C Retail Alcohol License effective June eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Resignation of Jason James from the Rand Park Pavilion Commission effective immediately. Appointment of David Grogan to the Grand Theater Commission term to expire November fifth, two thousand twenty-eight. Special event permit for the Kilkuk Community School District, all staff, school district kickoff and back to school bash, August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at Rand Park Shelter and Rand Park Pavilion all day. Special event permit for the Care Juneteenth Concert Parade Festival, Wednesday, June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, Main Street and Rand Park, ten A M. To eight P M. And I need a motion to pay the bills and transfers listed in the register's number five, four, seven, one through five, four, seven, three. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda, including the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven, A. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on the amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five annual budget. A public hearing notice was published in the Daily Gate City. On May second, two thousand twenty-five. I am opening the public hearing at five forty-four. A public hearing is required prior to the approval of the budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. An amendment is necessary to better reflect the revenues and expenses trending in the current fiscal year. These numbers are already reflected in the budget passed on April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five. However, the state requires an official amendment, but be approved and filed no later than May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Staff recommends approval. Do we have any discussion? Si- city clerk, do you have any written comments or objections? Have they been received?
No.
There being no further comments or objections on this matter, I will close the public hearing at five forty-five. Seven B. Consider resolution amending the budget for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five annual budget. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number eight. Motion to approve a second reading of the ordinance amending section nine point two eight point zero four zero, dealing with parking regulations for the northerly side of South Eighteenth Street from Main Street to Carroll Street. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Don't move.
I will need a roll call. Crenshaw. Walker.
Aye.
Mullen. Cackley.
Aye.
Dade.
Aye.
Andrews.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Do we have, do, um, any motion to waive the third reading of this ordinance? With no motion, that, that will move on to the next meeting. The first part, passed. Item number nine. Consider resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with E O C N, an environmental group for the cultural recon- reconnaissance survey. Do I need a motion to approve?
Second.
The Public Works Department requests that the city council authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with E O C N, Environmental Group for a Cultural Reconnaissance Survey. E O, E O C N will conduct a reoc- reconnaissance survey of the area of potential effect for the Eighteenth Street resurfacing project from Ridge Street to Main Street. The cost of this study is eighteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. The city of Kiakuck received appropriations of nine hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant to re-surface South Eighteenth Street, the Road of Honor, from the intersection of Main Street, the U S Highway two eighteen, to the entrance of the Kiakuck National Cemetery. The environmental review that was completed in August of two thousand twenty-three was non-adequate. The city was made aware during a meeting with SHPO and HUD on April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, that further requirements were needed in order to receive the appropriations on section one oh six review of the project. On April seventeenth, a request for the scope of work was sent from the city to E O C N. On April twenty-ninth, the O C N responded with a P S A to complete SHPO's, SHPO's request to allow them to complete their section one oh six review. Staff recommends approval. Do I have any discussion?
Is there a particular reason why there was a discrepancy between the August review and the one that is being sought now? Were we not provided the adequate requisition of information?
My microphone is working. I thought it wasn't. Uh, yeah. So the discrepancy in the original project survey that was done was found to be non-sufficient by HUD and by SHPO. So when the grant was first awarded, it was being dealt with by HUD out of the Washington, D C. Office. Recently, that was changed to the regional offices. Uh, and ours is in the Midwest and it covers four states. They, when they were reviewing it, they noticed, um, that SHPO had not signed what they call a concurrence with the original study that was done by a company called Impact Seven G. This is a requirement that SHPO does a section one oh six review. And without it, um, we will not get the nine hundred and sixty thousand dollar award from HUD. HUD has been very instrumental in assisting us on making it through this process. They've been really, uh, great to work with. Uh, but this is one more thing that we have to get done.
Another hoop.
Yes.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number ten. Consider resolution awarding contract for Grand Avenue, twenty twenty-five reconstruction from North Eight, from North Seventeenth to Boulevard Road project. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Any discussion? Bids were received on March twenty-sixth for the Grand Avenue reconstruction project from North Seventeenth Street to Boulevard Road. One bid was for asphalt and two bids received were for concrete. The low bid submitted by Jones Contracting Corp. of West Point, Iowa, was for concrete in amount of seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents. The engineer's cost for this project is one million, two hundred and fifty thousand. Staff recommends approval. Any more discussion?
I.
Go ahead.
I have a couple of statements. I, um, I voted no on this on the April third presentation. Uh, for anyone who is in the viewing au- audience or listening audience, uh, that did not hear the workshop of April twenty-eighth. I want to make it clear that my decision to adjust my vote from nay to aye was not to do, due to any chastisement by fellow council people. It was not due to the one person who resides on Grand Avenue to, um, urge me to change my vote. It was. Not due to two emails that I received for, from people in the public telling me that there's a hundred thousand dollar engineering fee that should not be wasted. I resent the fact that. The. Cost of the engineering fees had to come from somebody in the public rather than from some city employee whose obligation it is to inform council members who are going to be making decisions. The mayor doesn't have a vote. The city administrator doesn't have a vote. It is the city council members who need to have accurate information. Do we have yet an actual statement, bill, whatever you want to call it, from the engineering company to clarify what the complete cost for the engineering fees were?
We, we do have, yeah. And that'll be presented to council after the award of this contract.
And it's not important now.
I'm not saying it's not important, but it's our, it's what our obligation is to pay the engineering firm. I was asked not to bring that to council during this meeting.
What a strange request. Um.
Can we have a ballpark figure?
Uh, it, it's in the neighborhood of the hundred and twenty thousand dollar range.
Okay.
Total. That, that also includes the fifty-one thousand. They're all, it's grouped together.
I.
A hundred and twenty plus the fifty, okay.
No, it's including that.
Okay, gotcha. So in the range of a hundred and twenty so far for the engineering.
That will be it for the engineering. There'll be a, uh, cost that will come before council for the construction management side of it. But we won't award that to the engineers until the construction contract's awarded.
Okay. Um. I guess I'll let it go at that.
Sure. I, I don't have that sheet in, in front of me. I do have it. I do have a, um, invoice and a, uh, change order proposal from the engineering firm with both of those cost amounts on it. Design and construction management.
Was it their request that you did not bring that information?
Brian, are you talking about the conversation you had with me?
Yeah.
Yeah. So when Brian came to me about it, we didn't have all the final numbers. And I know that we, uh, looked at Brian's first number. That was a big sticking point. So I didn't want him to bring in a number that had not been finalized before the council and then get another number that wasn't a hundred percent accurate. If he has all those now, we will get them to you. But we had this conversation, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I think, and we didn't have all the finalized numbers. So. So if that's the one you're talking about, that was
Yeah.
me saying, don't bring a, a number that's an estimate and not a final, exact number. Because I don't want that to be another issue.
Do you anticipate that number going even higher than 120?
Or the engineering fees themselves?
The total engineering costs? Or the total engineering costs?
I don't think so. The construction management is separate, correct?
Right.
Okay. My last little point is that my initial nay vote was clouded by my opinion of this whole process. Going to an outside company, paying thousands of dollars to have our streets videoed when I think we have street department employees, we have police department, fire department employees that know the conditions of the streets. Uh, so far, it hasn't been productive to know, uh, the conditions of the streets in order to get an absolute method for the repair of the streets. While I'm on the streets, I think that people of the public need to be asked to be aware of when they see city employees, whether it be street employees, sewer employees, waterworks employees, or any other construction-type employee on the streets, that it is prudent that they drive in a reduced speed not to endanger any of the lives of our employees that are working for the benefit of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
It's not a public comment section. What? Only during the... That's all right. Okay. That's all right.
Item number 11, consider resolution directing the acceptance of a proposal to purchase $5.5 million amount, subject to change, general obligation capital loan notes, series 2025, and approving the form and authorizing execution of the note purchase agreement. Do I have a motion to approve?
We'll move.
Second.
Resolution directing the acceptance of a proposal for $5.5 million general obligation capital loan notes with the intention of repairing streets, reimbursing the general fund for the purchase of a fire truck, and planned capital purchases, and approve the form and authorizing execution of a note purchase agreement. Staff recommends approval. Do I have any more discussion?
Again, I have a statement. I, um... When this was first brought up as being the proposal for a $7 million bond, uh, I saw that as totally way out of the ballpark. It has been kindly reduced by 1.5 million down to 5.5 million. I still consider that to be, uh, an enormous amount. Just for the information of the general public, we're looking at over the next 20 years, the capital loan notes that we have to pay off plus the interest, total up to be $39,779,365. And that takes us up through the debt again, 2045. Um, that will probably be well past my expiration date, but there again lies the burden that's being placed on future taxpayers. I am asking that those who may still be city council members, I'm done after six months on here, probably happy news to several, but, um... Please consider drifting away from the every three years that you propose to keep adding to the debt and let some of our debt get reduced before taking on more debt. We still are in the not-knowing session as far as the sewer separation is standing. Uh, we have the testing underway to try to, um, prove to the EPA that we don't need a lot more expensive sewer separation, which will require bonding. And I think we need to keep in the off-chance that we are saddled with a gigantic bill for that down the road, that we alleviate our financial debt to the citizens of this town.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 12, consider resolution setting the time and place to conduct a public hearing on a request to amend Title 20 of the Keokuk Municipal Code by adding adaptive reuse of special-use buildings in residential zoning districts. Do I have a motion to approve? Brenda, David McTavish and Crystal Ballantyne have put an offer to purchase a former church building in Parishut, 1028 Exchange. They would like to open a wedding event space that would include hair, nails, massages, dressing rooms, chapel, and reception area, along with offering space for meetings, family gatherings, and reception space. At this time, there is nothing in our current zoning code that would allow this. The City Planning Commission, at the regular meeting of April 28, 2025, approved a special use permit for the hair salon and reviewed and recommended adding adaptive reuse of the special-use buildings within residential districts as a special use. A public hearing is required. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Item number 13, consider resolution setting a time and place to conduct a public hearing to repeal Title 19 plat and subdivisions of the Keokuk Municipal Code and adapt a new Title 19 subdivisions. Do I have a motion to approve? Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission has assisted city staff and the City Planning Commission to update the subdivision code to adhere to the Iowa Code Chapter 354 and to make sure that the process is clear. The Planning Commission has met several times to discuss the proposed changes. On, on April 28, 2025, they recommend approving and forwarding the proposed ordinance to the city council. The council must hold a public hearing to allow interested parties to be heard before any changes become effective. Please set a, we'll need to set a public hearing. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Council liaison reports. Do we have any today? Anybody? Okay, staff reports.
Um, I have an update on the Riverfront Trail project. That project will be going to bid on May 20. It is a DOT bid project. That means none of this is being handled in-house at the city of Keokuk. Um, the only council responsibility and vote on that will be after the bid is done, after DOT canvases provides us with a letter of recommendation and then all the paperwork. That will then be brought to the city council, uh, awarding the contract to the lowest bidder, as chosen by the DOT. Um, the construction cost estimate of that was a little over 1.1 million. That has been funded by private donations and grants.
Anybody else? Item number 16, after speaking with Lynch Dallas Attorney Pat O'Connor, we will not need to go into a closed session due to some changes in the way closed sessions are, um, starting to be handled. There is a suit in Cedar Rapids, and they are changing some ways that that's being handled. So we were told that we could go ahead and do what we need to do in open session. So the city of Keokuk has reached an agreement to hire Mr. James Furno as the interim city administrator. Mr. Furno will sign his contract tomorrow, Friday, May 16, 2025, and will begin work on Monday, May 19. We look forward to work with Mr. Furno, and please make him feel welcome.
Again, yes. Uh, there is, uh, the council's been generous enough to allow a transition period, uh, between Jim and I. Uh, we've had some conversations, uh, yesterday and today. He thinks that a little bit of time together would be valuable. Uh, so I'll be here as long as, uh, he wants me here, and I'll give him my cell phone number in case he needs anything. Look forward to working with him.
Any more questions or discussion? Um, this is, I'm sorry, this isn't open to the public discussion. Thank you anyway. Anybody? Okay, so, um, item number 17, new business. Item number 18, motion to, I need a motion to approve to adjourn the meeting.
We'll move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? So, um, let's just take about two or three minutes and then we'll come back and do the workshop.
Um, it has to do with the zoning and subdivision. Isn't it right back towards the end?
Yes, sir.
Did the guy that you hired?
Okay. Yeah.
No, we did not. He reached out to us.
Did he ask?
That was a while. This gentleman reached out to us.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I got it. So you're the chair. All you have to do is tell me. And then I'll have...
Well, and this, um, this gentleman reached out to us.
My light?
Let me know what they, and then I'll have them send it out. Okay, yeah, thank you. No problem.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's in there. It's just...
There's so much behind it.
I, I scrolled down and I got a topic.
I made the, I made the exact same.
Sometimes we do and redo.
I think what I'm saying is, I'm sorry, you guys. I know, I know.
It was last year. No, she had, she had the illness and then it definitely... Yeah.
Actually, no.
Every 15 seconds.
I have a shirt. We'll find out from Pam.
I mean, kind of those bad things. And you can, we can talk. She's gonna have to fall in the world. He just... But anyway, we're fine. It's just sad. The nicest... Naturalist. You can worship. And I think this, this, it's a, it's a, it's a... But in a situation... Well, it could be... You know, articles out. It's just another...
All right, so it's all about the public hearing. We get to page 78 of the packet. These are all the comments. Yeah, yeah, so it's, so I think it's gonna be Pam walking through what she wants to do so that we already are aware of.
That church. I can't replace my... For... There's a lot of expenses.
Might on one side, but that's not the side I have to strike. See if I can pull up the map.
I'm not in that room.
You should go back to my camera. My first word is here.
Unified. Yeah, it looks like there's a parking lot off the alley. Because it's that church right there on the corner of 11.
Yeah, there is a small one back there.
All right, guys, here we go again.
There's, there's maybe eight to 10 spaces.
I'd like to, yeah, open the council workshop, May 15, 2025, immediately following the regular meeting. And item number one on the agenda is, um, discussion on zoning and subdivision. And I'm turning it over to Pam.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody, um, received the information. Well, I guess you did because it was in the packet. Um, if you had any questions prior, I mean, you can ask them, of course, in the, um, public hearing, but I didn't just want to spring something on you, um, here in a couple of weeks and you didn't have any information on it. Um, I've sent the subdivision ordinance to Fire Department, Public Works. I'm not sure if the Police Department got it, and I'm sorry if you didn't. If you want to review it, you can sure do that. There, there were a couple of changes in there, um, that, um, the Planning Commission actually needed changed or wanted changed, um, and the Fire Department wanted changed. wanted change, which were about fire hydrants and fire access roads. So it's pretty clear-cut. The biggest change in there is definitions for minor and major subdivisions. So a minor subdivision would be less than four lots, and you wouldn't need any new type utilities like running a water main or sewer or that type of thing to it. So in those types of things, it'll just go to... Just interstaff will review it, and then we can sign off on it. Otherwise, it's got to go to the Planning Commission and then come to the city council for approval. So does anybody actually have any questions on the subdivision ordinance, or you need more clarification?
I had just a quick question about the two miles outside of city limits. Does everything outside of that, does that fall on the county then at that point, or how does that work?
It does. So the city does not have to review two miles out, but the state actually allows cities to do that in case you ever annex out. And you make sure that, you know, they're at least in compliance with what your rules and regulations are.
Okay, yeah, that was going to be my next question.
Yep.
Thank you.
Pam, in regards to event venues, does this kind of make a unilateral approval of event venues and subdivisions? And the reason why I ask, I know that there's been questions in the past pertaining to parking, and that has even come up with this particular example with that church there.
Okay, so, and this is totally different. The adaptive reuse is totally different from the subdivision ordinance. That's in the zoning ordinance. So the Ms. Valentine and Mr. McTavish had came in wanting to purchase the church, and this is at 1028 Exchange Street. So it's the old Calvary Baptist Church. There's not a lot of parking there. There is a small parking lot. I believe maybe 10 vehicles possibly could get in there. I didn't really know what to do with it. Nothing really fit. I talked with regional planning. I looked up some other communities' information. So what then, what we call a special-use building would be something, and it wouldn't be all special-use buildings. Well, I guess, so like a church or a school, city hall, there are several different types of special uses that are not actually zoned like a M1 or a C1. They're actually... They come to the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment. They look at those. They go through criteria to make sure that they won't be a detriment on the neighborhood. And then they may put specifications, rules, regulations on those before they actually allow them to go ahead and do that. So that's what a special use would be. So a lot of, you know, I'm not going to say a lot of the churches, but there are buildings, like the schools and churches, that are becoming vacant. And I believe this one has probably sit there now for, I think they said a year and a half that it's been for sale. You know, somebody could buy it and do a church. Somebody could buy it, and it's in a two-family dwelling district. So somebody could buy it and put, make the church into a dwelling, and then, you know, have the parsonage as a dwelling, so they could have two dwellings there. But like the school building, somebody could come in and do multifamily residence. But we're kind of looking at trying to, an adaptive reuse of the building other than what is actually allowed in there. So what it would be is that they would have to go to the Planning Commission, make sure that, you know, give them all the information. Planning Commission would review it, go through their criteria, and then they're either going to forward it to the Board of Adjustment for approval or not. I mean, the board, just like the city council, wants the Planning Commission forward you something. You do not have to accept their recommendation, but they look into it. You know, they have committees, and they do put a lot of effort into it. So I think, you know, for the most part, unless there's something that you really feel is out of line, I think, you know, you should go ahead and adopt what they've actually recommended.
So just to clarify, then, it's these proposed changes in the adaptive reuse portion, it doesn't automatically grant usages. It just gives these boards then the actual appropriate mechanism to be able to grant.
Correct.
So there's still a process that will get vetted.
And this is not going to be... So if you have a non-conforming use, which would be considered a legal non-conforming use, which is if you have a building in a residential district, like a grocery store that we used to have, and we changed the zoning to residential, that grocery store can still be there. And any use in that, so if it was a C2, which probably a C1 in that, for instance, when they actually were in there, anything from a C1 down to an R1, if they sold it, could go back in there. So, but the non-conforming, the legal non-conforming uses are not part of a special-use building. So just so you, you know, everybody knows that. We're trying to... We didn't want to grant variances. That's really not what you want to do in your zoning code. You want to try to come up with something that's going to work for these buildings, or you're just going to say, no, we want them to be either a church, or we want them to be a residence. I mean, it's, but that's, yes. And I did get a lot of input from Jack Swarm with regional planning and Jared. We kind of went back and forth. Zoning's really tricky. You can't always... You think you've got everything covered, and then all of a sudden, it's like, oops, didn't think of that. So I did get a lot of input from them, and they give me a lot of actual good feedback.
Any more questions? With that being said, we can go home, but I would like to tell you a story real quick. Look at Brian. Like to tell you a story real quick. A family member of mine called me last night and said that she was driving down Johnson Street, past the Sid Center where the old laundry is there by, behind the Sid Center. It used to be the hospital's laundry, and there was a gentleman laying there on the ground and had gotten hurt somehow. And just as she was driving around to get out of her car to see if he was all right, one of the city trucks pulled up, and she said it was the black city truck, so I'm assuming it was Bob Wees. And this family member of mine is probably a more nervous wreck than I could ever be. So she was just freaking, and Bob calmed her down and took care of the guy, called an ambulance, called the police, and she wanted everybody to know how wonderful the city of Keokuk person did to help that guy. So that needs to be said, and I'll make sure Bob Wees knows it.
Way to go, Bob.
So anyway, it's time to go home.
Good thing you didn't forget that one. See, Mike, I messed up so bad last time when you were the mayor that I stayed on it this time.